All right, we'll now call the City Council Regular Meeting to order for July 26, 6:00 P.M. Please rise to the invocation of blessed allegiance and wish to give my councilwoman Brenda Gray.
Father God, we ask you to bless our leaders from the top all the way to the bottom. Lord, let us make good decisions concerning our city of Avon Park. We ask you to bless everybody that's here and the ones that have sworn freedom but could not be here in the bottom. They ask this in every blessing and every message. Amen.
Amen. With the allegiance of the life of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Please have a roll call.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan? Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Deputy Coram?
We have one item we'd like to move up, take care of first, item number 15. For information reference, forgiveness of CDBG housing grants. Derek, if you can...
Sure. My apologies, please. Mark and I wanted to do that for you tonight, but Mike tried to contact your grant administrator to get more information and we just got a hold of today and we weren't able to get a lead, but basically with the Housing Assistance Program Plan that you all, that we were using to try and come up with an answer on this, and I looked at my analysis, it's apparently not the right one according to what he's saying. He has to do some research to find the right plan because based on here, the mortgage you want to place. So it's going to be a few more days that he's going to get that and then I'll have to look at the analysis. But, you know, in a nutshell, it's, um, tell you what, um, previous plans have said, that is, that you have, if somebody passes while they're, um, they're receiving mortgage, what generally happens is they, they, the owners inheriting the property, if they qualify for this, the same thing, the same mortgage, they're just letting them pick that up and amortize out over a 10 or 15 year period, I don't know how much money it is, and just keep on amortizing in that person's hands. But if the person doesn't qualify, they have to, they have to, at that point, when it changes title, pay off the mortgage. And so that's, that's, and that is predominantly, I've done some research about our cities and that's predominantly how the other cities do it as well, throughout the country actually, with the cities in other states as well. Okay? So we'll give you more information for next meeting and so as we get back to the administrator part.
Very good. Any questions for Derek on that?
I don't think we...
Seeing none. We'll move on to item number four. We have the Bird Scooter Legacy Bicycle, Mr. Dan Andrews. Dan, if you could, would you give your name and address for record?
Absolutely. My name is Danny Andrews. I'm the owner and operator of Legacy Bicycles in Sebring, 204 South Ridgewood Drive. And we are here today to, to share with you a concept that we introduced into Sebring back in March. And with the flavor of success that we've had, we thought it was a bad opportunity to, to see if the city of Avon Park would be interested in allowing us to have a permit to operate scooters in Avon Park. The Bird scooters, they are what we call micro mobility. They are electric scooters, dockless charging. So what that means is daily, we reconsolidate the flock, we manage the flock from a charging standpoint, and then, and then we resend out the, the units in designated areas. So the way we've operated in Sebring is we have five designated areas that we, we station the charged units, and then each day, we collect them from around the community and restage them and charge them. The idea of a micro mobility is that they can be, they can be used to their end destination without having to be returned to a charging station. And what we found in Sebring that, that happened that we really didn't think would happen is they're being used more and more as means of transportation to and from work. We have one gentleman, for instance, he works at Inn on the Lakes and he lives downtown Sebring and he commutes every day on a Bird scooter. And he kind of got upset with us for a little while because we kept picking it up because we set it solid on the side of the highway, the stoplight, but once we, once we realized what he was, what he was doing and how he was doing it, we now leave that there and don't take it away from him. So I emailed a packet of information about what the scooters are, are about and how they, how they function. And I won't go into detail about that unless you have some questions. But what I would like to share is, and I sent it to, to Mark not too long ago, is kind of our success story in Sebring. And you can see, we, we started in March, actually February 26th is when we actually started. We started with 50 scooters and as demand demonstrated, we added an additional 25 scooters. Bird wanted us to add an additional 50, but we felt that wasn't manageable for our market. And, you know, and that, that's one thing about this, we, we live and breathe in these markets and kind of have a good feel for that. Bird, being a company out of California who, who provides the insurance and liability and owns the equipment, they don't, they don't have feet on the ground. So, you know, they want to come in with this big, huge 100 unit push, but we felt we wanted to start with 50. We realized the growth to 75 and then we're pretty consistent with that. We've had, in the last three months, we've had 4,000 unique rides. So that would be one individual, not, not, if Ms. Gray grabbed one and rode it three times that day, that would count as one ride. So we've had 4,000 unique rides, unique rides and, I'm sorry, 4,000 rides, 1,100 unique riders. Better state, sorry, 1,100 unique riders. And then we've been able, through the algorithm, have been able to determine that we actually have about 320 commuter rides that have been used, so somebody using it from their, their home to a workplace. And so we're, we're pretty proud of this success. We feel we kind of landed at the right time coming out of the COVID. And we just feel now would be a great opportunity to explore this in our sister city. Our feelings are, and I'm remiss, I didn't introduce, Dan Feathers is here with me today. He's kind of our operations manager. He handles the, the day-to-day running and managing a couple of our staff members that, that handle some of the charging. So our, our initial idea for Avon Park would be to, to start with a fleet of 25 units. We create what's called a geofence. So this is an electronic fence that sets the boundaries for where they can be used. Last thing we want is somebody trying to cross Highway 27 on a scooter. So, you know, for Sebring, for instance, we basically follow the, the highway and the parkway and everything in the middle. Dan and I have been, been exploring and playing around up here and we kind of feel that the mall and Lake Verona and that area. And then we felt like we should probably talk to Chief Marcy and some of the public works staff to see what their thoughts are when creating a geofence. But based on our initial assessment, we feel that 25 units would be an appropriate number of scooters to start with if the town or the city was interested. And then, you know, we'll see in three months where that takes us and then we would, we would go forward with the city's permission if, if it demand justifiable. So I guess my simple request today is, is a permit for use in the town of Avon Park. And I have a copy of the agreement that we created with the city of Sebring, if, if that's of any assistance.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. You got a, got a, um, I'm not sure if I just...
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me first say that Tampa, very familiar, used in Nashville, Chicago, Tampa, so on and on. I really liked using it. But you need to think about your, that is, as a concession, is this going to be the only one you allow? Now, if so, then we should be done by RFP. If you're allowed, how many want to come? How, how, how are they going to handle it? And they've got now all of a sudden 200, I presume that's a different, because there's like a dozen companies that do this.
There's real, yeah, there's about half a dozen reputable companies that do it and there are several others that, that definitely do it. And, and what we did with the city is we asked for a, a non-exclusive use permit. And then we felt if, if demand showed other, other companies interested, then go through the RFP cycle. But I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, that's good, that's fine. I, I, I think it's... What is, what do you pay in Sebring as far as concession price on that? So just the convenience they have in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Where would you store these at? Would it be city property? Is that where?
Yes, and that's, that's really where the, the request...
To do the city property?
Yes, yes, ma'am, because, you know, the, the units are pretty much being used in public right-of-way. They're encouraged to be used as a bicycle would be used. So that's, that's what we encourage. That's not what you always get, but...
And you need rules, you need rules on those things. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but Jim, there's going to be, you're going to have to develop rules because, you know, they, they'll, some people will leave them right in front of the doorway of some business and some will leave them halfway in the street and halfway out and so...
So let me address that.
But I know you guys now require pictures of where they leave it and that, 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 that way you can control portions of that now.
And that's part of having, having us do this is we have somebody daily that's addressing those situations because that happens, you know, somebody inadvertently leaves it in front of a drive across the driveway. And these units have GPS trackers in them and have alarms in them and their wheel locks when it's not being used. That way somebody can't steal it even though we just picked up one in Winter Haven. But the, the idea is to minimize the theft and, and so it's, it's difficult for a homeowner to be able to move it because the things aren't even, and, and so, so that's why every day, in Sebring, we do it twice a day because we have more units. But in Avon Park with 25 units, we'd need to run that at least once a day. And then we would have a rental station, or not a rental station, we would rent a facility that would allow us space to charge them daily. That way we're not driving the back and forth to Sebring every day. And then we would still maintain our repair center at Legacy and bring repairs down and exchange them in and out and things of that. We will also be hiring a, a part-time person in the, in the city of Avon Park to, to handle the day-to-day charging with Dan overseeing that operation.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Then let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
And, and you know I see these all the time in Sebring. And I, and I see that it's, you know, it's been utilized really, really well. But what's the downside to this? I mean, we have an accident, then I promise you, every time I see them riding, I'm going around the circle, they run right in front of me.
Yes.
So what's the downside? What's the negative to this?
Well, you know, I'd be lying if I didn't say that accidents, accidents happen. We've had, we've had a fair share of them in, in the city. We haven't had any major accidents, not come where anyone's... And, but the responsibility of the use falls on the user. And they have an agreement through the app that they download on their phone to use it that, that defines the rules and regulations. It, it explains if we have certain, like we use an example in the city of Sebring, they have a skate park. And so we, we had to zone that out because we weren't smart enough to realize we needed to do that from the get-go and we ended up with half a dozen broken scooters because people were jumping on my brakes. So, you know, we learned. And, and so that, that gets defined in the app and they're, they're explaining that when they, when they check it out and, and things of that nature. What it, what it does bring is it brings a lot more activity to the downtown area than, than what you generally had before they were there. So from Sebring's perspective, it's taken a little while for, for them to, to get used to that travel. And, but what you see now is you see commuters, you see folks in their cars, you see them paying attention to them now, whereas maybe in March and, and April, they weren't paying attention to them. So, so it's an educational process and, and, and it's no, no different than a bicycle except you're quadrupling or 10 times as many out there at a given moment, right? So, so we, we, we run into the same pitfalls that you run into a bicycle. People using them on sidewalks and not paying attention to, to stop signs and things of that nature. But the community has grown with us and, and has grown to, to embrace it even more than when they initially allowed us the opportunity, so. But Fire Department does handle the fair shares of threats and bruises and stuff.
I was in Sebring when they first started and I saw the app. The administrators in Sebring showed me that as we were standing together and they actually calmed them and worked and wrote those. Isn't there an age limit to that?
There is, but parents can override that.
Okay, now I've seen a lot of children, I've seen a lot of students on them.
Yeah, but it, it, it's 18, 18 or over, but parents override that all the time.
Okay. So speaking of, of, let me just ask this one question, tell me a minute to go. Speaking of age limits, if I lived out on, um, 20, let's say Main Street and 27, if I lived there and I went to school at Avon Park High School, could I rent one every day to drive from there to there?
It, it depends, depends, depends on how we define the geofence.
Okay.
So, you know, we'll, we'll work with you all or whoever you'd like us to work with to define that territory and, and those boundaries. We had a couple of areas in Sebring that we had to draw back on because we were seeing a lot of damage and people keeping them in their house, trying to steal them and things like that. So we've drawn some areas out, but, but we worked with the police chief and the fire chief to, in Sebring to define those areas. I think it worked pretty well so far. But Ms. Gray, anywhere you want to go, I'll make sure that geofence is shared.
Okay.
I'd like to see that too.
Jim, you have something?
I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
One, you have in here community pricing with a 50% discount for low-income veterans, seniors and community nonprofits. How do you establish that?
It's all done through the app. So when they register on the app, they give some of that information out, whether, you know, military ID, things of that nature. So that infrastructure side is done by Bird as a, as an entity, not, not us individually. We, we basically are contracted by Bird to be the fleet manager. So we handle the repairs and maintenance and charging of them. Bird handles, and that's why the, the proposed contract agreement would be between the city and Bird. Bird has all of that and, and they have different algorithms that they use. They also do various discount rates depending on use. So somebody who uses frequently can earn, you know, discounted rides and things of that nature.
Okay, and, and one other question, have you considered about usage at the college? Or, or people could either use it in the college, area, campus area, or even use it for, like people that, who used to were staying at the Jack or Rannick.
I have spoken to a couple of foundation board members and, and we're, we're, that's going to be a, an avenue that we look at also. The, the colleges and universities either love them or, or hate them. I think with our style of campus, we may be able to embrace it a little bit more than like USF. USF had, had issues. And that's because, because of some of the, I don't know if you've been on that campus, but it's pretty big and, and, and so they, they had some issues and they actually did away with it on that campus, so.
I know, um, we have one issue you could probably have to overcome. As it looks like those sidewalks on Main Street are ours, but they're actually DOTs. And so we, we really can't license you to use their, their sidewalks.
So, so I think you would be licensing us to utilize city property to stage them. But the DOT laws already allow for micro mobility on their sidewalks and right-of-way. So my understanding is, is we don't need any additional FDOT permission. But you're right, I wouldn't be able to stage six units there every day on one of those sidewalks. We would have to do it either, you know, at the park down the street or, or get permission of a private, you know, peer grid or somebody like that to be able to stage them in front of their business. Yeah.
And, and we'd have, of course, in our agreement, make sure that you were responsible because if DOT, if required.
Yeah, if, if required. It wasn't, you know, uh, North and South Ridgewood are, are state roads in, in downtown Sebring and they, they did not require it for that, but absolutely. I forget the gentleman, local gentleman's name, but...
Oh, you didn't speak to DOT about it, because I...
Yeah.
Sometimes they just let things ride for a while before you correct it on them.
No, we have spoken to him. There's a local DOT rep. He helps us with the Heartland Traffelot also. And I can, I can definitely reach out to him.
So it sounds to me like most council members are looking pretty favorable of doing something like this. Obviously, we can't make a decision without an agreement. So I guess the next stage would be for you to send the, possibly the agreement that you have with Sebring.
Mark, did I say this electronically?
Did I say agreement to release indemnity you talked about?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's in the package.
Is that the whole agreement you have with Sebring?
That's the only agreement we have with Sebring, yes, sir.
Okay, well, um, we'll, we'll look it over.
Sure.
So you have electronically that they're present?
Yes, just sending it.
I'm going to just ask one other question. If, if we decide to go with this, I'm going to go first of all. What, where was the staging site? Have you have a, did you, have you decided on a staging site or in Avon Park?
We wouldn't do that until we worked with your staff.
Okay.
It, it's important that it be in a place that we all feel... Well, for us, we want the visibility, but, but for you all, you know, we need to not block, not block sidewalks and roadways and things like that. So, so we would, we would work with you or, or your staff to, to determine those, those, we call them flock stations.
And you would have one or two?
For that, we would probably would do, we, we probably want to do four. Yeah. And I, I think, you know, one of them, I, I think we'll probably do one at Peer Grid where we have, you know, there could be 25 units. So at any given time, you're going to have five or six units off the road that are being either charged or, or repaired. And so, and, and we usually try to stage in groups of five, so.
Interesting enough, I, I don't know how they do it in Sebring, but in some cities I've noticed that they prohibit the sidewalks, use of the sidewalks and you can only use the street. Others prohibited to use the street, you can only use the sidewalk. So I don't, I don't know what the best is for you guys, but that's what you're going to consider.
Yeah, and, and, and the discussion with Sebring was their ordinance did not, their local ordinance did not prohibit micro mobility, so it allowed for it on the sidewalks, but it does prohibit bicycles. So it was kind of a gray area, but that's how they, they, they addressed it. I don't know if you guys have a local ordinance related to your sidewalks and use of bicycles and skateboards. But that's generally kind of the classification of all that.
We do have multi-use paths that are partly meant for bicycles.
I suspect that we have to do something to prevent it.
So do, Derek, do you need approval from council to look this over and get to work on it?
I don't hear the opposite position, so I would like to work with the department on that.
Just like to verify one thing that you don't mind figuring.
Yeah.
So basically, this is not a profit item for the city in any way, shape or form, correct?
So larger communities, Tampa for instance, they go to RFP, they have five users. And the way they operate it is there is a user fee that, that gets paid through the app and then that gets paid out to the city weekly. Smaller rural communities almost see it as, large cities see it almost as a nuisance, but we allow it because people have fun with it. Rural cities, and what we found at Sebring is, is they want them, they embrace them because it creates interconnectivity and easy access to and around stores throughout the downtown area. And, and kind of is, is one of those tools towards revitalization. And, you know, we see that, we see that downtown Sebring already, people using it to, you know, they may have only gone to the ice cream shop before, but now they jump on the scooter and they come down the Legacy Bicycle. So they go to organically local, they go to the Faye's Bistro, you know? And so it creates that, I talk with my hands, or, kind of creates that interconnectivity. So, so smaller cities seem to embrace it and almost encourage it without, and then the larger cities do have a small municipal tax. It's a, you, I don't remember how it's defined, but...
I have an assessment.
All right.
Just one other question. Could you say incorporate this as far as the south side? Because what I've seen a lot of foot traffic is from the south side to the post office.
Okay.
I see, I see a lot of, of, consider that.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we'll, we'll consider everything, you know, and, and, you know, Bird's idea was it's, it's better to start small and expand. We've found it's better to be a little bit bigger and then retract areas and reshape areas that may, may, we may see issues out of, so, you know. I, I did say that there's a 15 mile range on the scooter. So if you acquire, rent a fully charged one, you can go 15 miles, which is...
Which is everywhere in Avon Park. There and back.
So, so they, they have a pretty good range to them and, and I think it would allow some, some new access to stuff that people may be...
Are these governed to 15 miles an hour or are they allowed, or they go faster or what?
They're governed to 15. And we have the ability within the defined geofence to create slow zones. And, but we can't, we can't go over 15. But we can go three if we want.
All right.
So like a school zone or, or, or a high traffic area, you could, you can knock it down so that it automatically slows down. The only thing you gotta be careful of that is if people are used to them going to certain speeds and now you have them crossing roads and that, and it's not that speed. So, you know, you just kind of have to, we have to be smart about it and we can, we can address that part with you all.
Very good, all right. Let's, let's see an agreement and let's get to work there and then I'm sure we'll have a, at least one or possibly two more meetings to discuss this and...
We're on all the details.
Okay. I just have one more quick question that I don't think we discussed. What are the rental rates for the guy?
So the initial, you know, it's, it's kind of, kind of Uber-esque, you know, so you get a $3 charge or...
$1 if you scan it.
$1 when you initially scan it and then 39 cents a minute after that. Download the app, it's free, so you don't have to worry about paying for that. But every time you scan it, it is a dollar. And, I mean, people have been going for, for hours and...
Can we get you to speak in that microphone right there?
Sorry. We've had people go on for, for an hour and it's, you know, $24 for, for the hour rental and people have been enjoying it like crazy.
Yeah, I've got a lot of bills from my trip to Nashville.
Sir, could you give your name and address also for the record?
My name is Daniel Feathers, student of Florida.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, we very much appreciate you guys. Look forward to working with you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, item number five, we have the June 12th, 2021 council regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second. Any questions on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. Item number six, we have the approval of purchase of water meters for the utility manager. Rick Reed, do we have any questions for Rick? We have eight Badger Model M120 and we have eight Badger Model M170s. We have 250 Badger Model M25s for a total cost of $62,372. Again, do we have any questions for Mr. Reed?
This is already budgeted, correct?
Yes.
Are you radio read at all anywhere in the city?
I'm sorry.
Do you have radio read anywhere in the city?
Most of them are, sure.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'd like to motion through, brother.
C6?
C6, please. I'd like to motion through, brother.
C6?
C6, please.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Item number D7, we have an update on the airport cleanup. Rick, again, let's see, or sorry, this is Rick Whalen.
Okay. The work has been completed for the commercial industrial, so our cleanup target levels. And the conclusions and the final report, uh, pretty... And the conclusions and the final report, pretty basic. But I'm gonna let Catherine Emery, who is now online, to go ahead and explain that. Catherine?
Okay, good evening.
Catherine, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Hello, Catherine.
Okay.
We hear you breathing. Catherine?
Yes. Based on our conclusions, just like Rick said, everything went very smoothly and well with the.
Basically, the cost came in at just under $27,000. I have $1,000 for gas, oil, and tools that we buy us. And for a total of $27,974.13. Now, she hasn't done any of the work yet on abandoning wells. She's waiting to get everything done. Responds back to the Department of Environmental Protection on report. So none of that money has been spent yet, but that's included in the code. We'll find out once we get that report back from D E P, when we can go ahead and abandon wells. And again, this is for the commercial industrial, for mediation. For residential, that would be an additional cost.
And for the budgeted amount?
Well, they had estimated between $75,000 and $150,000 to this cleanup. We did it for $27,174.
We're not completed yet, but it's looking pretty dang good so far.
It is.
All right.
I have one question toward Rick. It seems like we still have some concerns about mile number one and two. Can we explain that?
Yeah, the amount of water stick in there is above the, the sort of contamination of it. And, but the up, it's flowing upward towards the last well. We don't expect it's gonna go anywhere further. Once any committee's back and D E P comments on it, we're gonna have to run one monitoring for a couple of years. And each year, it's gonna be $2,000 to $4,000 for.
There's no more ground removal work?
Not unless we go with the residential. If we're gonna put condominiums or daycare center on.
Yeah, we're never gonna go to residential. Commercial is about as high as wherever we're gonna go. Really industrials won't like it. Okay, any other questions on item number seven? Seeing none, we have item number eight, resolution for preliminary fire assessment. Chief Marcy?
Eric, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'll try and make this quick. I dropped this to you guys. I'll give you a little two-minute rundown here. About six years ago, you did a study for fire assessment, which sets your highest rate that you can do. So at this point, that number is 140. Then every year, you do two resolutions. Your first resolution, which is what we're doing right now, is setting what you want to set as the max number. Then in about a month, you come back and you revisit this and you actually pick the number that you're going to charge per resident, industrial business, all that. So that's what we're here to do right now, setting preliminary rates. I have numbers for you if you want to raise it. I have numbers for you if you want to keep it like it is. I have heard sort of discussion of maybe wanting to raise it. So I have all those numbers for you if you want.
So it's presented to us at 140 and .074, .011, and .028. Is there any modifications to that or any questions about those numbers?
Well, the only question I have is obviously the residential was increased. Were the other three items also increased?
Yes, they all go up proportionally together.
That's funny.
So residential will be increased to 140 if you decide that, is that the max?
That, what you're doing today is setting the max it can be. You don't have to.
Oh, I got you.
You're setting the max right now. And then when we revisit this in about a month, you guys will then say, we have the max at 140 if that's what you set. But you can set it anything below that.
Okay.
And we're currently at 112.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I don't have a problem setting the max at 140. Like I say, we can always go down. We haven't really gotten into our budget yet, so we don't know where the shortfalls are gonna be. We weren't provided with a rough sheet on milledge. But that just gives a very 30,000-foot view, doesn't really give a very detailed view at this point. So it would be my recommendation to go with the highest and we can always backtrack from there.
I agree 100%.
Any motions or?
I'm making a motion. I'm making a motion to approve item number D eight, as stated.
We have a motion and a second for the questions.
Can I get some?
Sure.
Was there something about the date in here?
Well, you have two options on the date. So right now, the one you are approving is, is that the August? It can be earlier. So if you're wanting to stay at 140, you can do it at August 26 or September 13. If you're doing it without noticing a bunch of people, if you're not going above 140, then you can do it at the August 26 meeting. I just need to know which one you want to revisit. This is for the second time to actually pick the number, okay?
So let me, so let me just ask one more. So if we say tonight, the max is 140, then when will we have to revisit it again?
That's what he's bringing up. And that was, I left that part out. You have an option of either bringing it up August, I'll make sure I'm saying the date right, August 23rd or September 13th.
Okay.
So just let me know which date you want to revisit it and I will print out the proper form to have your meritorium.
Is the August 23rd our regular council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I, my suggestion would be August 23rd.
I agree with that.
And that would be enough time for you to get everything, for those things to be mailed out and notifying the people?
Well, if, so you're not going above 140, we only have to send notices to 36 people. And they said that only takes about 20 days to do.
Okay.
So as soon as I get them this information tonight, they're waiting for me to send them this back. They will start on that next day or two noticing those 36 people. And those people are, that have annexed in or moved in in this patch of year. So they're just getting notified for the first time.
So Jim, was it your intention to make the motion with the August 23rd date?
I, yes, I did.
And Chris Johnson, did you second with that notion as well?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item number nine, we have the trim notice, D R 420, and set the tentative milledge rate as well as the, just tentative milledge rate. All right, Ms. Melody, what do you have for us?
Okay, so in fact, you have a copy of the D R 420, which will set our preliminary milledge rate. And just like the chief said, the milledge rate on the D R 420 can also, can always be reduced but not raised. Based on some figures that I took together in the two weeks that I've been here, I would suggest we put on the D R 420, the milledge rate at three. We can always, like I just said, we can reduce it, but we can't go past that rate. And that would take it to only taking out of the reserves $36,796. And if we raise the fire rate to 140, we wouldn't take any out of reserves. We'd actually add two reserves.
But reserves are good now, right?
Yeah, the reserves are at 3.8 million.
At 3.8 million?
So basically, if the intent is to raise the fire assessment similarly to what we just approved for the trim notice, or excuse me, for the notice, then you could go as low as basically 2.66. If your intention is to not raise the fire assessments, then by all means, we need to put it out at three to leave us wiggle room for budget negotiations.
Well, I personally think it was always good on a trim notice to go as basically as high as we can because that doesn't mean that that's what it's gonna be and it's gonna come down. And I'm sure all this is due to the proposal of the Sheriff's Department that wants to basically increase the rates considerably, tremendously upward as well as the amount of officers that they want to hire. So I don't think we're ever gonna need the 3% milledge rate, but I definitely think we should use that as a trim notice.
Any other comments?
I personally think we should keep the trim, we'll do the trim notice to 2.66. That's what it is. What is it, what is it now?
It's 1% right now.
1%, so if we go up to 2.66%, then we'll only be removing less than $200,000 out of the two. How much is in reserve?
3.8.
3.8 million dollars. So to me, that's a drop in the bucket.
So consider this, Ms. Gray. The figures that I have in here are just temporary. There's still a lot of moving parts right now. So just remember, you can always go down from three to the 2.6.
I understand that, but I know this, this council normally what they set it at, that's what they need, that's what it is. So that's just my recommendation. That's just my, my thoughts, you know.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, it's also my understanding, I believe, that we came in close to spending on budget limits for this year. Is that correct, Mark?
A bunch of what, Jim?
Budget limits.
Most of our budget limits.
Oh, okay.
So we tried to cut it close. So like I said, I don't think we're ever gonna go to even as high as the 2.63631. But I still think it just makes good common sense to say that the three mills that's just out there doesn't, I don't expect it to even come close to that, in my opinion, what we're gonna do with the sheriff proposal. But I don't see any reason why we can't make it 3%. I'll make a motion that we set a trim notice that's real.
There a second?
Second there.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I mean, I would agree, just for the sake of, sake of argument and sake of negotiations, we have no idea what's gonna come in on the numbers in the finality of it. And we have no idea what kind of fat we're gonna be able to trim from the budget and which course the council's gonna take. So obviously, the most amount of wiggle room that you have is gonna be the best thing. We just have to remember that we have to be conscious of where we end up with the milledge rate. We want to be as fair as possible to the citizens. We don't want to have a loaded budget. So we just always have to have our thinking caps on whenever it comes to budget time to make sure we don't do that.
Yeah, I think we can make a conservative law like that before we get done. So that'll make us look even better. We cut it in maybe even two.
That would be fabulous if we could. So we have a motion and a second. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, one thing, kind of on that same line, I wanted to bring up, see how the council feels about it, is we do have the ability, if we don't, Jerry, please stop me, but I believe that we have the ability to also do a law enforcement assessment as well as a fire assessment in lieu of raising tax?
I don't believe so.
No?
No, I know that it's been tried in the past, and I had to look at the case law. I'm worried it's at right now, but I know the past has been rejected because it's, you know, it's, as far as assessments, doing trim counts and things like that just generally doesn't work. Please, but I'll check it out and let you know. Okay.
Thank you.
That was kind of my thoughts too about the fire assessment is that basically the fire department is a public safety item for the city as well as the sheriff would be a public safety item also, in my opinion. So that's why I think with going with the 140 on the fire assessment kind of helps us out on both areas.
Well, I mean, it's a more direct tax. Everybody knows what it goes to. So you know that whenever you see that bill for fire, you're paying for fire. And whenever you see law enforcement, you're paying for law enforcement. Conversely, if you could do that all the way across the board, it would be kind of cool so that you could actually see what you're funding. School board is this amount, you know, all the way down the line. And people would probably be more involved in their local government if you could do that, but.
Well, I think it's a great idea, man, if we could do it, that's for sure.
We'll see.
I'm sure it's tried, it's tried before.
Okay. Well, if there's anything that resembles that, Mary, please let us know. All right, so that concludes the trim notice. Next up, we have item number 10, discussion of budget session dates. Melody, you again?
So we need to set some dates to start discussing the budget, open to whatever you guys want to do for council meeting or a different day. It's up to you guys. If you just look at your calendar and let me know. The sooner we start, the better.
How, how long would it take for staff to be ready to have one of their own this time?
I can have the general fund ready probably in a week.
And the rest of the funds?
Maybe a week each, each fund.
So are you suggesting maybe the second week in August or would it be more like the third week in August?
I would say the second week in August.
Okay.
And then if we could meet weekly?
I have no problem with that. So ordinarily, we would have a council meeting on the ninth. So do we want to, since it sounds like they're probably gonna be more often but shorter meetings, you want to start the first one before the council meeting on the ninth?
Sure.
Council members, what do you think?
I just fine with me for clarification. I like to make them all special meetings instead of a workshop meeting.
Yes.
So other than that terminology, I'm good at any day that seems to be all agreed.
How much time do you perceive?
I would say at least two hours.
At least two hours? Okay.
I'll be able to start at half three.
Well, the question would be, you know, work schedules and, you know, when do you guys get off? Or what's the earliest during a workday that you guys do it? Or do we need to push them into Saturdays or?
I can be a little bit in work time, you said.
Right now, what about you?
On the ninth?
Yeah, so we're basically, we're basically looking at the ninth.
So I can't hear what you guys saying down there.
Okay, we're basically tentatively discussing the ninth, the 16th, the 23rd, and probably the 30th.
But either one of those, that's almost based upon me. And the earliest that we could be to start would be what time?
That's what we're asking you. We're tentatively talking about 4:00 P. M.
Oh, 4:00 P. M., that would be fine.
Okay, and then if we run over, then, you know, we might eat up part of our regular council time. But we've been here till 11 o'clock plenty of times, so don't worry about it. All right, so the first budget hearing will be for August 9th, 4:00 P. M. All right. Very good. Anything else on item number 10? Seeing none, moving on to item number 11, set date for tentative fiscal year 21, 22 milledge and budget.
So the tentative milledge and the final milledge.
Shut it, yelling that mic off.
The tentative and the final dates are pretty much set in stone. So the tentative will be September 13th and the final will be September 27th. Has to be anytime after 5:00. Speaking with the city manager, he said that generally it's right before city council meetings and then you just go into the council.
Okay. Very good. No objections to that from council? Item number 12. Yeah, well, we have the tentative and the final, it's already been set. Anything else on budget at all? Very good. Item number 13, we have the standing grid removal bid acceptance. We have a book of information here. So last we spoke, Rick, you were going to be looking at some figures that.
Correct, everybody's favorite topic here, standing grid.
All right.
I see my backup is on the screen there. Can we do a sound check, Randy? Jonathan?
Here.
Randy, are you there?
I'm here.
No. Does the volume turn down a little bit for now?
Can you hear me?
It's there.
Yes, I'm here.
Cut it off with answering some of the questions council had last time.
All right. The cleaning that was done in 2017 was not from the oxidation. Did you, it was in the digesters and the headworks. So that explains a lot of why there was extra tonnage. From what I understand, and Jonathan could, there are players who we could hear, and Randy could also because they were both there. Jonathan's the only city person who was there at the time, who's still here. The digesters had about close to 90% of filled with sand and brick. Obviously done, I believe, because when the septic trucks came in, in the past, they would dump directly into the digesters. And so that was, needed to be cleaned out. One of the biggest reasons why we had an estimate of 85,000. The digesters had about close to 90% of filth and sand and grit, obviously done, I believe, because when the septic trucks came in, in the past, they would dump directly into the digesters, and so that was, needed to be cleaned out, but one of the biggest reasons why we had an estimate of 85 wet tons to be removed, and they wound up removing about 290 tons. They asked Randy why the estimate was off so much, and said, well, the person did the estimate previously, someone with company. So, that, that fee went from, I believe, $25,000, we wound up paying $97,000, well, this is a huge change order, because there's so much rant, uh, so much, uh, sandy grit.
That was a 50% match grant, whereas this is 100%. Funded?
Yes.
Yeah? Was it?
Is that, I thought it was 100% yes.
The first one, the first one was 50% match, according to the documentation.
Correct, yeah, I, I was all one thing, I believe it's 50%.
Okay, but the current one is 100%? Up to 89?
Up to 89,007, 89,150, I believe it's 850.
Yeah.
However, speaking with D E O, uh, Gabby has told me that they can increase the 100% match, depending on how much more is in there. Now, we had, uh, Rick Reed and Jonathan Delgado go out and throw the oxidation ditches, and their numbers, their numbers were matched what, uh, US Emergent had given us in their estimate, plus a little bit more, which you would expect, since the last time they did it was in 2019.
Roughly how much more, what percentage?
We're looking at 136 wet tons is what the estimate was, now, I'm estimating it may be close to 200, it, it's very hard to measure, because remember, the oxidation ditches are full of wastewater, they're flowing, so what you're doing is you're probing down to get the approximate, uh, depth of that, and it's not uniform. The tanks are filled up all along the sides of the ditches, and then slopes down, plus it's a combination of sludge and grit and sand, so you have to take samples to see what approximate percentage it is.
Yes.
Sludge you want to return back into the ditch, you secondly, quick to take out, so it's really, it's really, it's wait and see, I mean, they estimate 136 tons, and they, they have proprietary software, I wanted to see the numbers, how they es, they estimate that, they've got software made specifically for their, uh, for their work, and so I couldn't get the exact calculation, but I feel pretty confident that what they estimated, what we measured, it's, it's pretty much in the ballpark.
So, in the event of an overage, uh, obviously, it says that the grant was amenable to that, what is the process of doing that, do we pay for it outright, and then we're reimbursed, what is the chances that we would not be reimbursed?
And, and that I don't know, and I, I was hoping Randy and Jonathan to go ahead and fill in those details, so I didn't study that, but it, it is a relatively quick process, I think it's probably going to be reimbursed.
Okay.
You're going to need to have it done, and there, it might take several months to go, you actually know that.
Obviously, the representative from the, uh, company that you had the conversations with back and forth, I mean, they, they seem extremely confident that it was a very simple process, they do this all the time, you know, it's no big deal, I was just curious from staff point of view, is that, do you feel that's the case?
I, I think so, and you know, they've got excellent work, as you said, and everybody we spoke to about them has given great responses, so, they're very confident they do a job, and at the turnaround time for any excess money is going to be, it's all reimbursable anyway, so additional just takes the time.
I see.
So, let me ask a question, what the, so the excess of the, uh, 130 wet tons of sand and grit, and the $647 per ton over the, over the grant money that we get, how much do you think that we'll be spending in excess of that?
I, I can't say, uh, the reason I want 130 wet tons rather than 136 wet tons, which is what, uh, US Emergent had calculated back in 2019, is because by the grant, we only have to take out 80% of the sand and grit, we want to get out as much as we possibly can, because the more we take out, the more bodies we restore in the oxidation ditches, the better treatment we're going to get, the better effluent parameters, uh, numbers we're going to see. I, I, I think probably somewhere between, like I said, 136 and maybe, maybe 180, maybe 200, I, I just don't know, I, I don't have a good feel, I haven't been, I haven't known this exact.
So, Brenda, the, the worst, if it was 200, as you said, the worst case scenario was, I just did the math, and it's basically 38,000 and some change is the max. Now, what he's saying is that, they, they claim that that grant will get changed, and that we'll get refunded that money, but it just, that is the risk right there.
Okay. I'm going to say $40,000 in my mind, in excess of the 80.
That's the max, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I have a couple of questions, if I may, uh, why couldn't we do this work, but one of the, one of the two items, uh, shut down, so that we could actually get close to 100% removal, that way you'd have access to get it all done quickly, so it saves money and efficiency, and basically will also give, uh, faster stains removed, and, you know, that seems to me like it'd be a better idea, and if you have to wait on the one part that's on order, why couldn't we wait till that part comes to order, so if we had one, one was shut down, and one of them broke, we'd have to have a fix it right away?
Right, right now, the plant is rated at 1.5 M G D, that's 475 M G D each ditch, we have two ditches, uh, they can see up to about 1 M G D, while still getting the same treatment, because there's, there's, there's some, uh, you know, air build in that from additional, uh, margin of safety built in there. Right now, we see on peak days, we're seeing a little over 1 M G D, so if we were to shut down one of the ditches, we are seeing just up and over the upper limit of wastewater that can be blown, that can be, uh, pushed through one ditch, now, I still think we'll get the treatment, the problem is, if we bust one of our nitrogen or, or phosphorus parameters, or, uh, solid parameters, now, and effluent, this tried monitoring report, D E P is going to ask why, and if we tell them we shut down one ditch, and we're seeing over 1 M G D through the other ditch, it's going to be some question raised. This process was built specifically for this type of situation, where you don't have to take something out of commission to clean the bottom, and it's gotten good results from everywhere that we checked.
I, I also noticed, Rick, that the last time, this was only four, four years ago, but to me, this is a large expense, if we're going to do this every four or five years, I noticed that the last time the removal, they turned around and took a large percentage of, percentage of it and left it here on our property, so they're removing it, is that the same plan you're going to do this time?
You see, I, I, I can't speak to what was done last time, I was hoping, uh, our operator could.
It's in the paperwork here, it says that they were told to go ahead and just leave it there.
They were doing that to dry it out, because what you dispose of at the, uh, site is based upon weight, and so they put it into drying beds, which was the old method of, of, uh, digesting the sludge, it dries out, then you scoop it up and bring it back out, so that was done, to my knowledge, it just wasn't done immediately.
What are we going to do this time?
The, the wet tonnage is going to be taken out of ditches.
100%.
By the truck, yeah.
They didn't take out.
I'm sorry?
Everything that they remove will be removed from our property.
That's correct, yes.
All right, now, let me ask one other question, I think this was right around the time of our last hurricane, did it have any issues with that being caused with the problem of removal, and the wet tonnage, so on and so?
No, you mean all of the excess rain that we'll, that we'll be getting, that, but, they won't be, they won't be removing anything in a hurricane.
Okay.
You know, but, but remember that this is taking the sand and the grit from the bottom of the ditches, so even if it's raining, they can still be doing the work, I'd like to have some more expertise from Randy, but we can't hear him, so.
There's a possibility, at the last meeting, you couldn't hear me either, I wonder if we have an issue with our, uh, equipment or not, that's something we probably need to check into, because I know it's the last meeting, and I double-checked and unmuted everything I could, now, of course, I will say, I had a lightning strike three or four days before that, so it could have been, uh, something with my equipment, and if it is, I need to replace that part, but, uh, I don't know, I think I'd like to have a little bit more information, to talk to the, to members of this company, to ask them exactly what their plans are in the timeframe, I think that's really the important thing for me, and if there's, uh, somewhere we can get it done in a quicker manner, that will lower the cost, instead of turning about, worrying about having them taking 100 plus excess tonnage and cost us more money, even if it is $40,000.
You realize that the point is for it to be grant funded, so.
I think, we're not going to be spending, he might be on.
I think, can, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes, uh, again, I'm Randy Cordy, and I represent U S Emergent Technologies.
Okay.
Um, to answer your question about the hurricane?
Yes, sir.
You know, when the winds do get over 35 miles an hour, yeah, we, we're, we're not allowed to, to pretty much operate, but, um, you know, we're estimating to be out there at the site, uh, roughly about 12 days, okay? Um, to remove that 130 tons, now, if it does go over the 130 tons, you had asked about what that process is, um, you know, once we get close, let's say we're right there at around the, the 120, and, and we still think there's a, more to, to get out, we will ask Rick and Jonathan, everybody, say, okay, you want us to keep going, um, and if we do exceed the 130, there's a quick change order, once the change order is approved, then that paperwork gets, uh, also, there's a copy that goes to D E P, and once they get it, then, uh, anything that's over that 130 gets reimbursed, so it's a pretty, uh, it's a pretty quick process.
Randy, in your experience, uh, how often is that denied?
It's never been denied, since, um, I've been there five years, and it has never been denied through D E P. The only, the only thing that it would not be accepted is if the paperwork, um, didn't, wasn't, um, uh, you know, a correct path of the paperwork just has to go through, that's, that's it.
Okay, did you hear the question regarding, uh, renewal of the grit from the property?
Uh, yes, uh, and, and again, that's, uh, all of it will go off-site this time, um, the reason back in 2017, I know that, uh, they wanted to try to defray, because the grant did not cover back in 17, the disposal costs, so, uh, uh, Gillian back there wanted to defray some of those costs, so that's why they decided to use the drying bed, uh, uh, back in 2017.
Okay, I have one further question for Randy, while you're there, then, it's all, it's been five years since this process was done last, what do you estimate, the next time we'll have to do it again, is it going to be every five years?
You know, the digesters, uh, again, since that was, uh, you know, whenever you have a direct feed like that, um, and, uh, it just didn't go through maybe the grit, uh, uh, the headworks, uh, you know, in any kind of grit removal systems, so. Last time was a digester that we cleaned out, so it's, it's not the ditches, dishes is going to be done this time. Right, I'm just saying the digesters, so, uh, you, you, you know, you just have so much material that goes through there, now, now the ditches are a little bit different, so, uh, once you get through a cleaning process like this, and, and then again, I know you're getting the headworks redone, which is great, so that'll help minimize, uh, but I see these ditches usually every, uh, you know, five to seven years, uh, type of thing, and, and usually when you have a big amount that's removed, you know, that next time around, uh, i- it's usually not as bad, if, and, and you get it on some type of a, a maintenance type of rotation, so, it's just that they haven't been done in, you know, 10, 15 years, that's where, um, you, you, you find a lot more material, of course, and, and you got to get it on a maintenance schedule.
And Jonathan, how long have the headwork been, you know?
I don't, the headwork hasn't been working?
Right.
I've been there almost nine years, so prior to that, probably 12, 13 years.
Okay.
There's, there's, there's no grit removal in the system currently, and that's why we're looking at the new headwork.
Right.
We have grit removal, so that this in the future doesn't keep occurring so quickly.
Right, and, and the reason for the digester is, uh, septic machines, the trucks, that was filling up the, the digesters, that was the issue over there.
And again, with the, again, with the grit, with the systems that we currently have, for the septic trucks, we have no grit removal on those as well.
Correct.
Until we change that to get some kind of grit removal, you know, that's where we're at.
I, I think what will happen is this time next year, the headwork should be, the new headwork should be, is that correct, Jameson, about the right time, right?
Yes, yes, do you hear me?
Yeah, and, and so in between the time that the sand and grit is cleaned down by US Emergent, and the new headwork is operable, it's probably going to be six months, so you will get more, uh, grit and sand in those oxidation ditches, but it's going to be a small fraction of what you're seeing now, so the next time this has to be cleaned, it may be eight or nine years, and by that time, hopefully, we'll be expanding.
Is there a program, is there a program to, um, uh, identify, uh, infiltration areas, because I know infiltration, I know that's sand through the system as well.
I, I know we've done some work in the past, Jonathan, can you speak to that, Rick?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
Okay, identifying infiltration and inflow throughout the system?
Yeah, yes, that, you get sent through for, from that also, yeah. Manholes and stuff.
Yeah, we, we've been working on that slowly, but, you know, as everybody knows, we're, you know, we're, we're kind of short-staffed at this time, I mean, we did find there, right off a main where we had a, uh, a, a line break there, and we had, uh, explanation point come in, and they, uh, they made that repair, and yes, we, we still have some infiltration, uh, we've made some repairs and manholes and stuff, uh, you know, it's a work in progress, it's just when we have time between the breaks and everything else that's going on in the system, uh, trying to install new meters and everything else that's going on, you know, it's, it's getting the time to do that.
Then you get into, the infiltration inflow is going to stay there, and reduces capacity in your manholes, and then your gravity pipes, it's not going to make its way into the plant, the, the problem we have is that you see increased flows from the water now, that's been gradually, like Rick said, been being fixed as we go along, so it's, it's an ongoing process.
What is the estimate increase of efficiency after this is done?
Um, well, we'd have to do some number crunching on that, Jameson, I think your guys can probably calculate it better than I, you've got increased volume in oxidation ditches, so you've got better removal of B O D, uh, you're going to have better settling within the clarifier, so I, I don't, the efficiency that was stated in the last go around 2017, again, that's, when they say 90% efficiency increase, they're talking about 90% capacity of digesters being freed up, is that correct, Randy?
Yeah, we've got some real good data that, uh, every cubic yard of material removed is $3,000 of bricks and waters, so, um, it's a big impact.
Let me ask you a question, if, if I, if I have nothing mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, at the last meeting, you were, we were told that, once all this grit removal and whatever else overhaul is being done to the wastewater treatment system, then that will reduce our utility, uh, electric field, is that correct?
I, I think, uh, who may have brought that up was talking about the oxidation ditches, because you're, you're putting the same volume of wastewater through a smaller area, so you're, you're, you're needing to aerate more, you're needing to pump more, and that's what I, but, but again, the last time what was clean were the digesters and the headworks, and not the oxidation ditches.
So, will it reduce the utility of the lot?
Yeah.
You will get, you will have less electricity since last time, because again, the, the digesters themselves are 90% full, so they have to be aerated constantly with the volume of, 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 uh, digest sludge going in there, but it's not going to be the same as the amount of electricity increase in you actually pushing through the oxidation ditches, uh, guys, please correct, correct me if I'm wrong on that. Randy, did you?
You should see some efficiencies, definitely, uh, at the plant, uh, w- once you remove this sand and grit, there's definitely some efficiencies restored.
Yeah, and in addition, Randy, I mean, um, adding all that volume, you know, because grit's taking up a lot of the volume in the oxidation ditches, so removing that grit and increases the capacity of the plant, and allows more, uh, retention time of the solids to go through the system, which will definitely help the plant and potentially reduce the solids.
And the sand and grit is destructive to everything downstream of it, it gets in your pumps, gets in your lines, gets in everything, it's, it's basically sandblasting, uh, your equipment, so removing it reduces a lot of that.
And what is the updated information on when this new head is supposed to arrive that we're ordered?
The, the headworks?
Yeah.
Well, the bid opening is tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, and then, uh, the power will, bidder will be vetted, and then after contract award and construction, we're looking at what, Jameson, six to eight months? And then after contract award and construction, we're looking at what, Jameson, six to eight months of construction?
Uh, actually, a year. It's gonna be close to a year.
Okay, so, so this time next year, a couple of months, it should be operable.
Is that a yes or no, Jameson?
Uh, yes, I, yeah, yeah, so a year, I mean, a year from when the contractor gets approved. I mean, they have a year to do the project.
I said, it's probably gonna be closer to November.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So once again, we're talking about a total amount of eighty-nine thousand nine seventy. Is that correct?
Uh, that, that's what the contract, yeah, that, that's what the, the grant will cover now. But if it goes over that, it should be a relatively simple procedure to get a change order from D E P, like you said, Grant.
Okay.
Hundred percent match.
Ray, Ray, uh, I'm sorry, Rick?
Yeah.
Let me uh, you know, our, our proposed amount is for, I think it was, is it eighty-five thousand? Let me just double check, double check.
Eighty-seven thousand five hundred.
Eighty-seven thousand five hundred. That's correct. So what, what we'd have to do is uh, the grant will be for that amount. Okay?
Yeah.
And then uh, uh, that's what we'll do the paperwork for and and submit that to uh, Gabby.
Okay. So the additional two thousand dollars is over, I mean, it's not coming out of our pockets, correct?
No, they, 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 they will only do the grant for the amount that, you know, we contract for. And then anything that if it does go over, then it's just a change order and then uh, and then that'll get uh, again, reimbursed and uh, that's one hundred percent.
Okay. So recommended motion would be approval execution of the construction contract to U S Emergent Technologies LLC in the amount of eighty-seven thousand five hundred for the removal of the first hundred and thirty wet tons of sand and grit from the W W T F's oxidation ditches and then six hundred and forty-seven dollars per wet ton thereafter. Is there a so moved?
So moved.
We have so moved. Is there a second? I will second. Is there any further questions?
If this long was the grant covers them.
Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
I'm gonna say no.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. So it fails. So those who said no, what is your suggestion?
So this is what I suggest. I would like to get um, um, may have a meeting with the um, city manager and um, Rich. Just, cause I have some extra questions that I'm not really understanding.
Ask them now.
I'm not understanding them. I want to talk to them on a one-on-one, with just me. Okay, cause I need to get a better understanding.
Okay. Any other comments from the others, the naysayers? Okay.
That's why I said no too.
Well, Jim, what would uh, change your order vote? What do you see?
I'm just unhappy with the idea that the uh, the removal of the wet grit can be turned out to be doubled. I just think we should have a better estimate than that. Even though the fact it's gonna be covered, it's covered under grant, but uh, they say it's gonna be covered every time, even, even overage. For somebody that's done this for a long time, I think they should be able to give us a look after cost before we go ahead and prove it.
So Rick, on the estimates that you guys did that came out closer to a maximum of two hundred, what would it take to get those numbers to the, to be re-contracted at that amount and get it, the grant awarded at that amount?
Uh, again, the estimate I gave was just based upon measurements that, that Rick and and Jonathan had taken.
Right.
And uh, you know, not being primed to the software that U S Emergent uses, I'm looking at, so basically what you, you've got, you've got rectangular shape or oval shaped oxidation that you've, you've got contours of sand and grit and all that. So what that software must do is build the contours of that, and then you, it activates the area under the contours to give you a basic volume and then the percentage of grit and sand or the sludge is determined is used in that equation to give you a cross compare. So what it's gonna take, I, 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 I don't know precisely, and again, when I said two hundred tons, I don't know if it's gonna be that much. The, it was measured a hundred and thirty-six wet tons, the estimate was back in two thousand nineteen. A couple of years have passed since then, so I know more grit and sand is getting in there, but I just, I can't give you a better estimate than that.
So it's, it's Jameson that works for the company, correct?
Uh, I'm sorry?
Jameson works for the U S Submergent?
No, no, Jameson works for Killington.
Okay, so no one from here works for them?
Uh, no, Randy working.
Okay. So Randy, are you still on?
You're in.
Randy, uh, what would it take? Obviously, you hear the concern here. The concern is that it's gonna be a lot higher than the hundred and thirty and everybody seems to be uh, concerned that the grant will not cover it. So what would it take for your company to be able to get a more accurate, up-to-date estimate and basically redo this whole process?
Well, uh, again, we did our probing again back in two, twenty nineteen. Uh, you know, we can certainly come out and probe again. Uh, but, you know, again, the, the grant will cover anything that's in excess if, if it is in excess of one thirty.
Okay. I don't think the council is quite understanding that.
I do understand that. I just think that, you know, you go get your car recovered, the guy says, oh, it'll cost you two hundred fifty dollars, and you come back and say it's eight hundred. It's like, well, don't worry about it. You got enough money to pay for it. I just think if they're in the business to do the estimation, I'd rather have them do an upgraded estimate as it's two thousand twenty-one instead of two thousand nineteen.
But how does that change the amount that's in the pond? I don't understand. The, the estimate was done a year ago. Obviously, it's different than a year ago. You know that. Everybody knows that. So what good would it do to change that number if it's all grant funded? We know that it's not correct. We know it's gonna be buried by at least one ton or it could be up to seventy tons. So if they come out, they reassess it and they put it on paper, how does that benefit us other than killing them on the ditches?
Well, for me, it's just fifty million more trust. We only got one bid, so.
Again, the city of, of uh, of Lake Wales took it, took advantage of the program. They were, had a similar situation with an oxidation ditch. Fifteen years of not being cleaned. And there was over four hundred and two tons in that particular structure. So uh, we uh, a- again, they took advantage of the change order and again, they were fifty percent. Okay, where uh, you know, the city of Avon Park is a hundred percent. But uh, you know, the immediate impact from that plant of that much material removed was tremendous as far as capacity restored.
Right. If the work is a hundred percent grant funding, we are fools to not do the project. It's not contributing anything.
That's correct. Well, when, when I say that though, it's reimbursed. Again, you just contract with us or if there is a change order, and then everything is reimbursed.
May I ask you one question? Um, so is there a max amount on the reimbursement in excess of the three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars? It's like this, this additional twenty thousand dollars more. Cause that, because the bracket said that there's a max on the change order, on the change order.
There is no maximum amount. I- if, if you've got another additional, let's say, three hundred tons, it would be reimbursed.
If I could jump in and say, in your package, an email from Gabriella, I'm saying, I'm all are. Yeah. Program, and in that email, she says it's difficult to estimate how much has been there before the project starts. So this happens pretty often. What the estimate is. Uh, and and they, last time was fifty percent max of sand grit and they didn't have a problem with that. So make fifty percent of the over that, right?
Speaking in the, in the microphone, maybe?
I still say it wasn't fifty percent. Because you paid um, ninety, over ninety-seven thousand dollars to U S Emergent to be um, finish the last project. We got nine thousand five hundred for that gap.
Okay.
The city, the city only had to pay six thousand dollars for that project. So I, I, there, there's a probably.
That wasn't one hundred percent, yeah, but that, that was a question I had to Josh. What else? Was um, that six thousand, that, that one's been some uh, some actual work that we've done on the plant.
But Danielle, was that, was the last plant cleaning up the heads and the grits in every digestion? The digesters is, that's a Jonathan question.
It's upstream from the oxidation. It's just upstream.
Your, your B O D.
The B O D itself.
Yeah.
The same thing.
Those, those, you know, they got the grit and and what you're saying, you have an operational one and the rags, all the big stuff. Those are the oxidation ditches where the sludge do their work. Okay, and settle out uh, either a lot of the, either a lot of the B O D, that will be clarified when the sludge settles down. And then the effluent goes down to a uh, change order, gets disinfected and goes out to your pond. That sludge that settles down goes back to the aeration chambers partially and some of it goes to the digest where more biological activity takes place to go ahead and take out as much as we can. That's just a basic rundown of what the digest is doing. And those digesters were accepting, sand were accepting septic trucks directly. Is that correct, Rick? Jonathan? And, and that's, that's the way that it was being done in the past.
Can, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of the sand going into the digesters, the majority of the sand going to digesters is from the septic haulers. If we didn't receive septic haulers, we wouldn't have the buildup that we have currently in the digesters. The, the wor, the sand that we get in the ditches is because we do not have a sand grit removal currently. So right now, we have no sand grit removal in the system at all. So everything that comes in there, we're retaining and not getting rid of.
Uh, Rick, can you give me one favor? Please explain why we only have one? Two, four, this time. Why do we only have one? Why do we only have one, one, I didn't, only one, one bid, one bid?
We had two and one pulled out. Cause they say.
They don't know that. That's why we only have one.
Yeah.
Why we only have one?
Uh, yeah, there were two bidders and a low bidder pulled out.
And that's all, that's all responsible. It's two bidders. The one that pulls out, one raised the price because that. I remember that. All right. Mayor, if you wanted to redo the uh, motion.
If anyone wants to make a motion, they can.
Before you make, before um.
That, that, that doesn't matter. He doesn't, he wasn't prevailing side. It was, you know, I considered a fail, so.
Why did you say Jerry?
Yeah, anybody can make the motion. This is, yeah, it's not, it's not a prevailing side.
Did you have further questions, Brendan?
Yeah, I just want to say that um, that the um, you explained it um, um.
Rick?
Yeah.
Very well. But I still want to, just, just, I, I, no, go ahead on. I'm gonna go.
You wanna turn into a wastewater key?
No, I don't.
Okay, is there any, any motions?
Do you like to make the motion, Mayor?
Sure. Let me go back and read it over again. All right. Approval execution of construction contract to U S Emergent Technologies LLC in the amount of eighty-seven thousand five hundred for the removal of the first one hundred and thirty wet tons of sand and grit from the W W T F's oxidation ditches and then six hundred and forty-seven dollars per wet ton thereafter. So moved. Is there a second?
Yes, there's a second.
We have a motion, a second. Are there further questions?
No.
Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Praise the Lord. Item number fourteen, approved bid for Donaldson Park restroom restoration.
I praise the Lord too.
Praise any good.
Okay, uh, board of county commissioners approved our interlocal agreement for our R P A C grant application. Um, El Cobb Construction was our one and only bid for the Donaldson Park freshrooms renovations. Um, the R P A C interlocal agreement is for a fifty-fifteen match at thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Questions?
I'm making a motion to approve item number V fourteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Before you vote, uh, I wanna make it known, this El Cobb is uh, related to me. It's my uncle and cousin, so I will not be voting for that reason.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, no, I'm just after the vote. I'm not so in this.
Okay.
Make sure you get it performed, baby.
Will do. All right, any further questions? Item number fourteen. Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmembers Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy, Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
I will abstain as they are related to.
Motion pass.
Now, I have a question.
Free, yes, as in one of the things. Go ahead.
Mark, this is to Mark. Is there any reason why the bathrooms are not open on the uh, at the parks on the weekend and on holiday? And the reason why I ask that, I was out there this past weekend and uh, several male individuals had to use the, the tree. And I saw them go behind the building because the bathroom was locked.
Is it Donaldson Park?
Yes, Donaldson Park.
Chief?
Currently, the fire department goes, opens and locks those on the weekends, so that's probably just our missed day. Depends on what happens. If they get a call, if they're switching shifts and they forget, sometimes they forget. I would love to see the city uh, look into the magnetic locks that open and close certain times. That would prevent city staff from driving up and down the road to unlock a door.
Are, are you volunteering to uh, get prices on this?
Sure.
And get, and get the melody for the, the. I'm sorry, can you say that again, Mark?
Get to melody for, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
He had no problem getting a new fire truck for himself in there. No, that's um, the, the, if we can get that, that'd be great, but until then, the chief will make sure that they don't forget and we do forget, but um, he'll make sure they don't because they do need to be open and closed on weekends. People use it, so.
And brought my attention, so why don't you say something to him? Not me? Won't work like that.
That's not a novelist, is it?
No.
My fault. Oh, we're going.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item number sixteen, regular updates. Mr. Mark Schrader.
Um, fam, regular updates. Um, we had our meeting this, well, since the last meeting, we met the fam for about an hour and a half, I think, Jerry, and we still wanna get with them. We've set up for Wednesday, city staff for the first half hour, and then we'll have fam on. We're trying to, basically, our outside counsel is trying to get his draft completely together. Just a few more things that we need to talk to, especially they need to talk to with fam on it. And then it's gonna come to you for some questions that only council can answer. Uh, a few things that um, you need to decide, um, how you wanna go in the lease agreement. Jerry can add more, but that'll come to you. Right now, it's scheduled for uh, the next meeting on the ninth. Will you look at that? Jerry, you wanna add anything to that?
No, that's fine.
And then, that, hopefully, when we get that, then it can um, be presented as, you know, FAA wants to see it. That's their main thing before they make any um, decisions. But it's um, I think it's going well. I, I'm um, I'm positive it's gonna work out. Um, you know, with the both sides, but our outside counsel consultant are doing a great job, but that leads me to the, the next thing where we are on how much we spent so far on them. We've um, I got with Danielle, um, we've paid Kaplan and Kirsch, that's um, um, David Bernard. Um, so far, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and on Friday, I just received another invoice for about eighteen-four. And your consultant, um, Lowell Clary, he hasn't sent one, and he sent one, I think it was Thursday, and his so far is twenty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars. So um, as I was talking to Jerry earlier, and we knew it wasn't gonna be cheap for what they charge. I think our attorney's getting about five fifty and Lowell's three forty. So um, but I think we're getting more near the end and it's. So, um, but I think we're getting more near the end and it sounds huge, but in the end, I'm praying it's gonna be worth it if we can get them out there with all that we've got going on at the airport and I think every other day, something's going on out there. In fact, I give Rick Reed and, and David Roberts kudos. They went out there with, we, we've had some slips in the fence. No fence company, we even come out, they're so busy and they went out and they got the wire and they got it. They, they were out fixing fence last week, so, but there's, and there's a lot of other things that need to be taken care of, but we just don't have the staff for the money, so.
Um, I just wanna point out that we have nationally recognized, uh, consultants working for us, you know, which is a good idea for a forty-nine-year deal, so.
Well, yes, and I, and, you know, I got thinking over the weekend when I had this, that, oh, my gosh, I don't even wanna tell them how much we spent, but, you know, you gotta know, but both David and Lowell are outstanding and Lowell's done, David less Lowell do a lot, cause he knows he makes less money and Jerry stays out of some things, cause he doesn't want the city to charge extra money, so, but there's some things he has to be in there for his expertise in Florida and I, I, you know, I sit back and listen and, and most of the time, unless there's something operational, but you got three guys, including your city attorney, who, man, I'd take many days on my team, so, um, they're doing great work. I, uh, you know, we all knew some more than others, but Anne Marie Feeny. And, um, when I called a couple of people today, when I called Rick Waylon, who hasn't known her long, and I called Rick Reed, I mean, they were like, wow. And I, I, I called, um, Shirley. I wanna make sure you all know, actually, Maria sent me a, um, a text message, said she was out of town, she was stuck in traffic. But she's the only one I didn't talk to today and I figured she saw it anyways, but I called and talked to Jim, talked to Mayor, but Shirley had just met her on the phone. They were setting up for the triangle about flags and that, and she was kinda devastated on, on the phone, said, man, we're gonna meet this week and all that. But anyhow, I had the pleasure, I, I've met her daughters before, uh, one of her daughters a couple of times. They came to see me this afternoon. And, uh, they, they're gonna have a, they don't have a date yet for a family private viewing or, or service, but they've been approached by so many people that know their mom, what she's done in, um, in Avon Park, um, with the veterans and other stuff, that they want to have one for the public and they would like to use the community center because, uh, the, the War Dog Memorial and they just feel that that'd be very fitting, which I believe it would be, too. They wanna try to do it on August eighth, but we already had it booked and they said it didn't matter, so they're looking at, um, or on the seventh. So, August eighth is open. They wanna do it from eleven to four. And, um, I said, well, I'll bring it to council tonight. Obviously, you know they can rent it like anybody else, but I didn't know based on what she's done and what she's brought, if you might wanna waive the fees for the daughters. I just wanna throw that out there.
We could waive it for, uh, Battle of Vans, could we not? I mean, that was her organization and-
And it's a nonprofit.
It's a nonprofit, so, that would fit. I mean, do, do we need a motion for that, Jerry?
And that's, what time is that?
Um, right now, that, they were kinda making these up when I was in there, because they're in shock and, you know, but it was August eighth and they figured between eleven and four, they would need it, but they wanna set up, so I'm not sure what time it serves. They're waiting for me to call them tomorrow morning and I'll work with them and help them out the, you know, the best I can as part of the city, help them out.
Let the council members know, um, if anything changes on the date and time, that way we can-
I will, soon as I get it, I'll, I'll get that out, too, I hope you, so I appreciate it. They're really good, and I appreciate that, um. The last one, you all heard about this American Rescue Act and all this cares money and millions of dollars going to city. Well, thanks to our, our, our new acting finance director, she saw the glitch we had when we put it in and bam, and go ahead, I'll let you take the floor.
Okay, so, as you all know, um, the United States Treasury awarded the city of Avon Park American Rescue Plan funds in the amount of three million six hundred and seventy-seven thousand forty dollars. And we got our first, um, distribution on July third, which is half, one point eight million.
Wow.
And we'll get the, we'll get the second distribution in June of twenty-twenty-two, but it's, there's, um, a lot of restrictions on the funds, so you guys will have to make some decisions when we get to that point.
Happy to do it.
The chief is a little disappointed, because actually, Jim wanted to talk about something the other day. I said, I only had seven minutes. I needed to get into a budget meeting with Melody and the chief, cause I gotta keep an eye on the chief. He had, what, three or four things. He wanted to buy a truck for him, a rescue truck and what else, what else? He had about four things and we're like, we don't know, you know, that's a, that can be used for that. Well, he found out it couldn't be, so he was a little disappointed. But he, he's gonna put his truck in for about five years and CIP, but, like Melody said, we'll be getting with you. She has to set up a, an account that this money just goes into by itself and there's, I mean, she brought up-
Is there line items that it could be used for?
I'm gonna tell you the four, but they're, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, that's, okay.
Um, that they say it can be used for, but we have to look more into depth. So, um, support public health expenditures by, for example, funding COVID-nineteen mitigation efforts, medical expenses, behavioral healthcare, and certain public health and safety staff. The second, um, use is address negative economic impacts caused by a public health emergency, replace, third is replace lost public sector revenue, but only to the extent that it's related to COVID-nineteen, so, yeah. Um, number four, provide premium pay for essential workers. And number five, invest in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. So, there's a lot of decisions to be made and what we can actually do. Some of them I don't think apply to us.
So, one of them we did talk about today, because, you know, you all voted to give all the citizens, um, residents sixty dollars. So, we lost that money, plus we lost money on, we didn't turn the people's water off for a while, so, I mean, that, that's just one we were talking about. Actually, Melody brought that up today, that could do that.
Very good. Yeah, I, I'm curious if, uh, some of our subcontractors would also meet that because we had to use extra subcontractors, because our staff was either sick or we didn't have enough or that sort of thing. I mean, I can, I can get awfully creative, you know, those are some pretty broad terms throughout there.
Yeah, but they're, they're breaking out.
Okay. Okay.
Cause there's a lot of people like the chief.
A lot of good guys out there, is what you mean.
That's what I meant, of course.
All right, uh, another positive thing that's happening in Avon Park, we have two, uh, little league teams that are going to the World Series. Um, they just won state for Avon Park, uh, so Bo Jackson and, uh, Mason Cox teams, uh, are going. I think they're either going this week or next week. It is up to, um, out the, the middle of the country. And, uh, so we'll wish them luck and when they get back, depending on how they do, um, obviously, I think we should probably do something if nothing else, is to bring them here, congratulate them, uh, for the state. And, um, I'll probably bring up something to the council about, you know, in years past, long time ago, you know, you, we used to do like Keys to the City and, you know, plaques and things like that, you know, possibly talk to Jerry first before I bring anything up to, uh, see what we can and can't do. Maybe we should be institute some awards to, uh, different community members and, and groups and things like that to, you know, just let them know that the city appreciates them and we're proud of our local heroes and things like that.
As long as those possi-
Say it again, I couldn't hear.
Said all of those that has passed already.
Of course, yeah.
Mark, you want us to tell them, um, that today opens up to, um, city council election?
Qualifying.
Yeah, the qualifying starting today, correct.
Yeah.
And it ends on, obviously, September or August.
Yeah, August sixth, I think.
August the sixth, yeah, August, I'm saying, yeah.
So, what it stands is that, uh, three seats are available for anybody out there that want to run for city council. Today opens up at eight o'clock this morning, opens up the, um, the qualification period. So, anybody that wants to run for one of these three seats, go see, um, Mark's office, pick up a package, fill it out and turn it back in before August the sixth and by PM.
And for Jim, the door is unlocked. All we gotta do is open and walk in.
Okay, thank you. By the way, Brett, what do you decide to fill out your application?
I'm confused to answer that question.
All right, I thought so. I thought he was asking.
Anything else we can give the city?
No.
Seeing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay, quick adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.